Tal meri, bhi wallah, okay, usse class hai jypt hai ya. And ke additional topic sendi. Andar ki interest un ban jay pe, additional topic last log bharatao. Marian interest lagu chalaga, chepi aur kura mazraavalka. Okay, so. Unhi concepts fata vata chheta nu, toh that make basics clear aapate you can go and watch video. And it good esta, uh, jypti notebook esta. Dantlo you can find out the code, how to create a class, all those things, uh, and practice chesko. Uh, you know say, ye roja practice, hypo guarantee gali, uh, kuchh lekha, ye roja practice chesne, doubts se unte you can ask us. Kana? Yeah, stop start. My friends ki batch met ke chitande. Chaste, laga baalukodana series chupincharu. Mangusiris kuna pure baalusiris chupishtaran chappandi. Okay, good, so when we were programming, yeah, when we were coding. Uh, we used to use variables, huh, we used to use variables. See, and Python believes in indentation, uh, Python depends on indentation. So whenever you are coding, you are expected to code in straight line, okay? So, and we know that if there is if and all, it will go under. Okay, so this brings a concept called global and local variable. What is global and local variable? Whenever you are creating a variable, suppose you are creating a variable a b c equal to five. Okay, so every variable will have two things, okay? One is the name, that is the identifier. Okay, this will make it unique, so that whenever I say a b c, only this variable will be activated. And second thing will be the space. One is name and space, that is called namespace. See, I always take this example, so last month I met Akshay Kumar. Okay, so and we just shook hands and we had a coffee. Okay, so what do you feel? Wow, huh, which hero? Ni ne me room kodanukunna chadhanke, gurun nandavenduku, kuchandi. Eni kanti ke chepere, eleven thirty ke chepera? Ah, thundar ravalle, na class ke chepera leda? Adi, re poda na paira ayama chetan. Okay, so when I said, when I met Akshay Kumar, you all will think that, okay, wow, okay? But which Akshay Kumar? Is it Bollywood Akshay Kumar or my friend Akshay Kumar? Okay, so that means you are thinking that Akshay Kumar as universal. You're thinking Akshay Kumar as universal, that means that Bollywood. I was talking about my friend Akshay Kumar who only people in Hyderabad know. So that means every person has a name and influence. Correct right? If I say Chiranjeevi, so you will think that which Chiranjeevi? You should ask which Chiranjeevi? That means are you talking about that Chiranjeevi or my friend Chiranjeevi? Okay, that means every name has an influence. So every variable has okay, identifier and a influence. If that variable belongs to global space, global space, you can refer to that from anywhere. If that variable is a local space, you can refer only when that instance works. Suppose I have a function, I am writing a function, in that function I use a variable. So then that variable belongs to only that function, so that is a local namespace. If I am using a variable in the main program, in the main program I am using, then that variable is affected everywhere. You understand? So you can use that variable or refer to the variable from everywhere, that is what name and space. So Python, whenever we are creating a variable, I told you, whenever we are creating a variable, that value it stores. It will give the memory ID to that variable we talked about. And now another concept called namespace. What is the name of the variable and what is the space of influence? Range or scope of that, okay? So when I am having a function inside the function, if I am using a variable, I am using. That function when it is active until then you, that variable will be. Once I come out of that function, that variable is not because. Evi yaad, tich kore vastaramireana? Eni kanti classa? Manjstani pravalka chepin, class continue jeymani, love the cancer. Kuchh lekha, back poondama, poonam male, baal kancheshu. The time sense kota le, enna laa inaasa? Name space, you understood? So every variable has a name, unique identifier and a range or area of influence. Where you can use it without any uh, extra thing, okay? So built-in namespaces such as print id are always present, we can create, okay? Local functions create local namespaces, okay? And the lifetime depends on the scope of the object. Until that object is alive, the lifetime will be there. So that's why when after the function is done, after the function returns or prints something. You come out of the function and try to access that variable, you can't access. You understood the lifetime? Good. So here you see, what is this variable? Global variable, that means throughout the program, okay, this is like Akshay Kumar, Bollywood Akshay Kumar. So wherever I use, I can use in Delhi, I can use in Hyderabad, wherever I use, this is Akshay Kumar. Okay, this variable I can refer anywhere. However, this guy is my friend Akshay Kumar. Once I come out of my Manikonda area, okay, nobody knows him. This guy is like some Chiranjeevi. Once you come out of that, you go to, oh no, India, nobody knows, like that, okay? So the area of influence of that variable is here. The area of influence of namespace, namespace, local namespace, nested namespace, okay? And this is global namespace, so now this can be referred anywhere. But how can you refer, if I am saying that, if I am saying Akshay Kumar, then how do you know that I am talking about that Akshay Kumar? So that's where I say. A keyword I use, I met Bollywood Akshay Kumar. Then you will think that, wow, you met Bollywood. That means that Bollywood name will give you a reference that I am talking about a global Akshay Kumar, not a local Akshay Kumar. You understand? So that's why whenever you want to use a global variable inside a local space, we use a keyword called global. You understand? So that means using global keyword, I can refer to the uh, you know, uh, you know, uh, global namespace. And edit it, even edit it, okay, even work on that. And when you come out of that, this variable will be changed. You got it? But the same thing can I do for other, other variables, whichever these variables? No, once the instance is done, okay, you cannot, okay, good. Okay, so it depends on object. And that's why, that is the reason why in the namespaces, here variable one. You remember in the, uh, when you are calling function, when I am calling function, I used to say a and b. Okay, arguments a and b, parameters also a and b. Okay, I told you, I will teach you later. So arguments also a and b, parameters also a and b, this is also Akshay Kumar. But when you are going inside the function, the limitation is only in local space. So that is why there is no conflict, okay? That means here this variable name can repeat because this namespace is different, this namespace is different. You understand? So that is how you can, sometimes you can repeat names. You can repeat names, but don't do that, if not you will get confused sometimes, okay, if you will not. So any namespace, if this is, this is my object, I can use a variable name. And in this object also, I can use the same variable name, okay, good. And we talked about concepts, see, scope of objects, what is the scope of object? Here I am, okay, this is the function. Okay, this is the function and this is at the main level, okay? Now the, it will come here, control will come here, it won't execute because you did not call it. So it will come here, you called it, so now it will go here and it will go under it, okay? It will go under it, now first time instance is created, yeah, a object is created, this is what? Variable one, so variable one, but where it is local, okay, good. Then inside main function I am printing, so it will print variable one. Then I am going here, will it execute? Will it execute this function? Why? Very good. So it will go to here, now you are calling inner function. So it will come here and variable two, variable two, okay? And I am inside the inner function, print inner function variable two done. Now I am accessing variable one being inner function, okay? So this is again a global for this. But when I come out and I try to access variable two, it will give a error. Okay, so this is done. Uh, at this level, only variable one alive. But variable two, once you come out of that uh, object, it will be done, okay? So you try couple of things, you understand, but it is just to show you that these things work. This is scope of variables, next you ask for exception handling. Okay. So exception handling is a very good concept in Python, any programming language you have exceptions, okay? Uh, why we do have exceptions? Because errors are inevitable, whenever we are coding, okay, errors are inevitable. So what is the problem with error? Problem with error is it will crash the application, that means it will stop application from executing. Because we are using Python as a interpreter. Okay, so what happens whenever there is error, Python will stop and your application will crash. That's why sometimes when you are playing a game or using some application, it crashed. That means some event happened, I asked you enter your name and you entered your age, application crashed. So whose fault it is? Programmer fault, that means I can, I should anticipate some mistakes, errors and I should cover. That is where exception comes into air, okay? So errors are common while coding, failure takes good, what is error? Anything that is failure to execute, okay? This generates a unexpected output. What is unexpected output? Program stopped working, program crashed, whatever. So there can be different, different errors, what is syntax error? Because you typed print as capital P, that can be syntax error or runtime error or a variable error. There are different types of errors we see. So exceptions are error that are triggered automatically to, okay? So then we introduce, introduce a concept called exceptions, okay? Actually, exceptions are errors that get triggered. So that means whenever there is a error, you can trigger exception. So that means a exceptional event occurred, this is unexpected event. Exceptional event means unexpected event uh, occurred and that I need to handle. I don't know what is that, but I, I assume that suppose I asked her to give uh, age. Okay, I want to add age plus two years and then promote, uh, say something, but she gave name. Then whatever is name plus it, it will give error. So I assumed that maybe if I ask uh, uh, age, user may give something else. So that is one exception I foresee, okay? So you need to foresee all the possible conditions, okay? Then you need to trigger. I have taught you earlier, if I ask you your name and you gave something different. So in using the string and all we can find out. Uh, if, or if I ask you, uh, enter eight digits as password, you did not give eight digits. Then I, there is a code I write length and all I find out. So that is by the code I add, I guess. But sometimes any error, whatever error occurs, you want to trigger exception and handle it, we go with exceptions, okay? I will show you, okay, and we can handle through the code, you look at here. Okay, what is the type of error here? This is traceback, no, 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 type error. So that means I asked for integer, you maybe give, you gave string. So in the error, whenever you look, this is type of error, Python will give you and it is a handler. It's a handler, what is that thing? So most of the times when you look at this handler, you will understand what is the error and what is the remedy also. What is the error here? It is name error, okay, and syntax error. So like that, we have different types of error, for every error, we can write a exception. Okay, see, there are two major categories, one is compile time error, one is runtime error. Compile time errors are you, the syntax problem, okay, syntax problem. So what happens whenever I am running, if there is a syntax problem, it will stop there. You see here, what is the problem? During compilation, during compilation I caught this error, what is the problem here? Babu, what is the problem here? Huh? What is the problem online? Huh? Ah, marinjiku kuchunadu, ah. If condition, condition is comparison, comparison is double equal to not single equal to, single equal to is? What is single equal to? Assignment, so that is there. So it is pointing out there and it is saying that syntax error, this syntax error, okay? Oh God, okay, and runtime error, that means in the syntax error it won't execute the code. Runtime error, it will execute the code. I asked you something, you gave a different thing, so there is no problem with the code, but the user input is problem, okay? Look at, I asked, I want to divide two numbers, x and y. You will give me two numbers, what is x and y and I will give you the output. So you gave y as zero. That means what happened? Divide by zero error, so divide zero division error. So when you divide anything by zero, what is the output? Omm, aplo onno, saade kada? Infinity, tenth pasera? Ye roj matra teru? Ah, infinity, okay? Infinity, so that means this is not acceptable, user should not give zero. Two ways I can handle, I know that you may give zero, so what I will do at the y, y is the problem, right? Why I can say if y equal to zero, then print don't give zero. That way also I can handle or I leave it to exception, you understood? What problem I can anticipate? Y can be zero, if zero is there, number by zero is infinity, which is not possible. Zero by number is okay, output is zero, so zero output we can handle, but infinity we can't handle. So that is why I can write a code here or leave it to exception. See, the code approach is there or exception approach, you understand both approach? So this is, what is the error here? Zero division, so Python helps you with the error, Python tells you what is the error. If I am not using exception, if I am not using exception, what happens? This will stop the program from executing, it will crash. That is why I can run without crashing. So other types of error, what key error, type error, logic error, index error, everything. So keys error, you know, okay? All these types of errors we encountered. So these are the errors, so then how can you handle it? Good. See, we talked about is interpreted language, line by line, if there is error, it will stop there. It will tell Python, don't stop, exception happen, you raise a exception, huh? So exception handling, first one we will do is try and extract, okay? Let's go. So try block, what is the try block? Wherever you think that there can be a error. So in this, okay, the error could be over here, in the last example, zero division error, okay? Where can be the problem? The problem is when I ask you number, there can be a problem? When I ask you second number, there can be a problem? Where can be the problem? Where can be the problem? Huh? That will be a problem? Where can be the problem? Ah, what? Every code, every line we execute. Condition there kada, ma, that the code condition. Ah, when you are trying to divide, neenu meeku kattichenu, adi problem ha? Akati varite problem. Kattichinanduku, neenu, dongo donu, olochista. Okay, patthi bank robbery chada, mandraku chunna, olochichkoda, police patupotara manni? Okay, olochindu patupor, chasten a patupotara. Okay, so you giving y equal to zero is not a problem. When will be the problem? When you divide exp by y, so when are you anticipating error? When you divide, that line of code you bring here. Adviyandandi, veedargi. Adviyandisanga, ah, x value aragadaniki problem ledhu, y value aragandhi problem ledhu, yekar problem ostadi? When you divide, daan ni trialopakatali. Okay, you keep that in the try. So that means only that line or group of lines, okalaya navachu, group of lines. Those lines can create a problem, so that we keep under try. You understood what we will keep under try? Okay, when that happens, a exception is expected, okay? We will see, so expect block will say how you want to handle. Here see, print value of a is a, okay? And whenever there is the exception here, because I did not define what is a. So I am asking print a, so what is the problem expected? Okay, value error, I don't know what is that you are wanting me to print. Then I will say that an exception occur, okay? So now the program will not stop, program will not stop, I will show you some more examples, maybe you will understand. Ikachandi? When I am taking a equal to fifteen, will the problem occurs? No, b equal to two, no. So output is twenty-five. Now zero division, I took a equal to five, problem? No, b equal to zero, problem? No, when is the problem? Adviyandandi, so deni neenu, trikantpetali. Daan ni matram, trikantpetali, online, are you understanding? So which one I should use under try? The one, the code which creates problem, so I leave this. So you guys are thinking that I gave zero, that is a problem, no, 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 no. Okay, giving you knife is not problem, you using the knife is a problem. Okay, adviyandandi, so you keep here. So this one, when you divide by zero, in this case fifteen by zero, what is that? Infinity, that is zero division error, okay? Zero division error, so whenever it happens. Python is supposed to give you a error saying that zero division error occur and it stop. Now as I am using try, it is like a, ela chappalu, meeku silly example, um, oku bomb undi. A bomb, thiska lempertanenu, oku container laparatan. Priyamudi, pelthe, ekar pelthadi? Container, python vala cameavadu. So whenever there is error, I am keeping under try, so program will not stop. It will raise a exception, so every try should have a exception. Okay, endu try pittar meru? Why do you use a try? That means you are anticipating some problem occurs. So when you are anticipating some problem, you use. Okay, good, so that exception, so what exception? Exception utchinand chiptnaru, you said that there is exception, what type of exception gocha chappali? So this except is for zero division error. So that means whenever zero division occurs, you say this. Okay, that means, unko deyamuchu, maybe I will give you a string here. Then value error abachu. Okay, value error, appur dhincheli, except value error. So if value error is, then konikra, it will go to this exception. If zero division is, then it will go to that. So depending upon what the problem is, one of the exception will be handled. Adviyada, for one try, you can use multiple exceptions, okay? One area lot divided by, divided by uh, division a by b, it can be zero division. It can be string, you gave string, that's why it can be a problem. So all those problems I can write here, clear? Is the concept clear? See, it can be type error because I gave. So that means when I am doing this, two things can occur, one is type error or value error, okay? Number and string, add numericals only, so both can occur, value error can occur, type error can occur. So both of them, so here in this case. Okay, so this is my copy paste error, one of the error will be there, good. Okay. Then else, okay? So block inside the else, okay? Try, when should I try? Okay, this you try, okay? So what happens? When there is exception, whatever exception, you do this. Else, exception aite, if there is a error, you handle it. If there is no error is. If there is no error is, you do that. See, in this case, I am keeping this A plus B under try. So that means I am anticipating that there will be, there could be, it can be cause of error. If there is a type error, I am using the same handler. Every handler in Python will be E, in the E. So as E. So that E I am printing. So whatever, I am not, earlier what I was doing, I am giving a customized message. That you can't do this. Rather, whatever Python is saying, that I will use here. Whatever Python is saying, why should I say differently? Python is saying that you can't divide by, uh, string and that mean I will use that. Now else, what is else? When there is a error, I will go here. When there is no error? Yes. I asked you to give A and B values, okay, to divide. You gave me A and B. If you give something wrong, this error. If you did not give me, eh, if you gave correct values, then I need to say, thank you for giving. Like that. So whenever there is no error, else will be fired, like our print. For loop, there is else. When the for loop works, it's okay. Once the for loop is done, we can add else. Just we are adding else as a separate one. Then try we understood, except we understood, else we understood. Now we are going with finally. So try, except, else could be here and finally. So what is finally? When there is a error, you will use exception. When there is no error, else. I don't care whether there is an error or not. Okay, I want you to do something. Ah, that is finally. Okay, so this is, cause will execute irrespective of exception or not. The main, where we can use? The best example is opening a file. Whenever you are opening a file, most of you, what will do is? Suppose you are accessing a database, huh? You're accessing. You open the port. You open the port, you access and you take the data. After that, what you should do? Close the port. You open a file. You did everything. After that, what did you do? Close. Most of you don't do that. Especially with the database and all, when you establish a connection. Okay, you are going and working. And after you are working, you don't close it. That connection is where other, okay, infiltrators, okay, hackers and all will use. Open ports. Okay, it's like your door. You opened the door, you did not close, you went into your room, you got your stuff, you came out, you did not close the door, then now I can enter. So what is the job? After going, that's why we have this auto shut doors. Why? You don't close. You don't have enough closing. That's why we place the auto shut. Okay, this is that auto shut. I mean, whatever file you use, I shut it automatically. Okay, that means exception or no exception, you do this. What is that? So sometimes you don't thank user or you don't tell user that now the program is closed. Okay, like that. Then you can keep whatever you want to be executed without fail, you keep in the finally. Good? You see, okay? So here I can raise value error, okay? Raise value error. That means I am using a condition called raise. Until now, what I am using, whatever Python is giving standard error, value error, uh, syntax error, whatever Python is giving, I was using. Now what I am saying is, I can use raise to raise my own error. See, what all Python is covering? It's covering divide by zero, it is covering value error, it is covering, that is whatever required by Python. Now my error can be, you are applying for a driving license, but your age is below eighteen. That can be error, right? That can be error because you are not supposed to, uh, apply and you. So that means I can create a error. I can raise the exception. So what will I do is, first define student. Try invalid age error. So whenever you are giving age. That I am raised, I am calling this invalid age error. So age will be now what? Twelve. If twelve is less than eighteen, okay, yes, raise value error. Okay, now. I am raising value error. So this value error I created. Okay, I am using the raise to raise, okay, value. Earlier, Python used to throw me that error. Now I am saying that raise this error, okay? Actually, Python won't mind. Here there is no value error. Twelve is also value for Python, twenty is also value for Python, but I am saying that twelve is not acceptable. That means I am forcibly raising value error. If there is no raise, it, Python will not raise the value error because twelve is also numerical number, right? So Python says, no problem. But for me, it is problem. So I am forcing value raise error by using raise. So it will come here, low age, it will be. If I give you twenty one. Okay, it will come here, print your eligible. You understanding? Earlier, uh, uh, the error was raised by Python. Now I am forcing Python to raise this error, okay? Suppose A by B example we will take. Python will raise zero division error when? When B is zero. I want to create, when B is zero or B is one, I want you to raise zero error. Then what will I do? If, if B. Zero. B zero it eh, automatically Python will raise that error. It's already there. What is the new thing I want to do? Only when there is one, I want to raise zero error, which Python will not raise. Will Python raise zero error if B equal to one? No, but I want to raise. That means I will say if B equal to, I raise zero. Okay, so when it is B equal to zero, Python will automatically raise. If B equal to one, I am forcing it to raise the same error. Online, did you understand that? Now user define. What is zero division error? Defined by, defined by whom? Python. Defined by whom? Zero division error. Value error defined by whom? Syntax error defined by whom? Python. But what if I want to create something? Okay, I want to create something like, uh, zero division error. I want to create one division error. If you divide any number by one, what is the number? Same. So I don't, I don't like it. So what I will do? Divide by one error. Okay, like that. So that means I want to create a new exception. Okay, good. Look at. Class error, exception, okay? Small age error. High age error. Okay, do you know what is the driving age for India? Above, above eighteen. Eighteen, ah, wrong. Okay, this is wrong. Greater than or equal to eighteen. But lately I found, this is not the condition. This condition also wrong. And. Seventy, that's the license for a teenager. Okay, it is a problem. Okay, my dad told me that lately. So that means there are two conditions. Okay, above age and below age. Okay, Prime Minister can run the country at seventy five years, but you can't drive. Stupid together. Nowadays, seventy days also, people are very strong. They are working independently, rule martiality, okay? So that means there is a small age error. There is high age error. So if some person is applying for sixty years, small age error. Some person is applying for, uh, you know, this thing, high age error. Sixties driving license is there, huh? Learning, two years learning, huh? About greater than sixteen. Okay, so, so what I am doing? Okay. While true, see, I am creating a class. I created a class. Okay, I created a class, a class called I H R. And inside it is nothing. I need a class to raise it. I don't need to do anything. There should be a class. If I, if I call, you are, uh, uh, excellent student. There should be some class called excellent. If there is nothing called, class called excellent, I can't give you the title. First class, second class, third class. It is there. That's why I can give you. Now I am creating a new class. Okay, diamond class. Okay, diamond class means what? So I need to create a class called diamond. You understand? First I give you anything, huh? Uh, suppose you are, uh, in sixties and seventies, maybe internship is there. Um, okay, part-time job, suppose part-time job. Part-time job is not there. Either you are a student or you are an employee. So now I am calling something like a part-time employee. So part-time employee is not there. So first I need to, what I should do? I should create a class called part-time. Then only I can assign you. You understand? That's why integer float. Integer is a class. Float is a class. So how somebody created integer class, somebody created float class, that's why you are giving. You know, you are calling something as class. So without classes, you can't create objects. Okay, so that's why I am creating a class called high race, high age. I am creating a class called same age, small age, and inside there can be, I want the name. Nothing to be done, okay, so that I can call. Good. So this is only defining the exceptions. Now using it. So while true, that means it will keep on going, age equal to Alaska or age. If age is greater than seventy, I, I raise. I, when I am using something in Python, there should be a class. If not, this will give, what is high race? Is it a variable, is it a variable or is what? So when it raise, high raise, yeah, it is there, see? High raise. So from here directly it will go here. Too old to drive. When you are less than eighteen, what I am raising? Too young to drive. If both did not happen, then. Okay, only two things can happen. When you give me age, only two things can happen. This or that. So that's why that I am keeping under try. Wherever the problem can occur, wherever can be the cause of the problem, I use that. Clear? Exceptions clear? So this is how you need to do. So accepts are very easy to understand. So first thing remember. You need to identify where the problem source can be. That problem source, you keep it under try. Now there are fixed errors. Value error, type error, this error, that error and all. Those for that, you can write exception, value error, exception, type error, whatever errors anticipated. That can be one error, that can be multiple errors. If you are anticipating multiple errors, per one try, there can be one accept or multiple accept. Okay, done. So try accept. Then we have else. When there is exception, you want to do this. When there is no exception, go with else. Okay, then we have something called finally. What is finally? Whether there is exception or no exception, you do this, okay? Then we are saying that Python is deciding the error. Those Python developers expected that you may do these kind of errors. What is that? Syntax error may happen, zero division error may happen, okay, value error may happen, but in your, when you are coding. When you are coding, now, uh, banks, suppose, huh, in the banks. When your money is less than five thousand in your account, what is that? It's a error. So they immediately they need to raise a exception. Why? Your account balance came below five. So I need to give you exceptions saying that your account balance is low, if you don't do anything, we will charge you money. Okay, so what happens? You should try, try what? If balance is less than fifty thousand. So what you should do? You should raise the exception. But in Python, there is called low balance. Low balance exception is there in Python? No. That's why what I do, I create a class called class low balance. Okay, now I can say class no balance, no balance I can use, that word created. That, uh, I forget, okay? So now I will say, okay, accept. Okay, raise, I am raising, manually I am raising my own, okay? So I will use this. So when I am raising it, it will go to accept, in that I handle it. You understand? So this is how you can use the default ones or you can raise the default ones. Or you can create your own exceptions and raise them. Clear? So that is what we do here. See, I created a. Okay, and I am raising that. Using raise, I can raise the existing ones that Python developers created. Or I can raise the user-defined new exceptions. Is that clear? Good, intending. Okay, you try to create same thing. You try to create and any error, you try to handle or you go with your, um, hmm? Yeah, yeah, you do this OTP generation. If length of the, if length of the OTP is less than four. Okay, you create a raise exception. In that exception, you handle. Exception can be print statement, exception can be another code. Ah, exception can be another code also. You run this code only when that exception happens, like that. Sir, I can use if, yeah, you can use if, but this is a exception, huh? Uh, here we can do, here, right away I can say this. Okay, that is if, but this is a how to raise. Uh, you are practicing how to raise. Regex and all live in it. Okay, that's what developers, we teach, okay? Oops, still a simple concept. I will give you overview. I will explain the concept. And then I will give you Jupiter notebook. In that, there will be so many things like how to create a class, how to create an object. And user-defined class, this thing, everything will be there, huh? Today you practice that. Today, if you don't practice today, you will forget. Okay. See, we started with these functions, huh? Procedure-oriented language. What is procedure-oriented language? C. C is a procedure-oriented language. Then, in the procedure-oriented language, we have functions. Every time we create functions, okay, we can create functions. So functions are what? A piece of code, I keep it here and whenever I want, I will call it. Okay, function, it is very good. Functions are very good concept, but when this. Okay, function, it is very good, functions are very good concept, but when this functions, everything, I need to create a user, new user. Okay, banking application, new user, I need to create a vendor, I need to create this, I need to create OTP, I need to generate that. So functions, 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 you are writing too many functions, you won't have any control on that, complexity of a program uh happens. Too many functions, too much dependency, interdependence will be there, so when this happens, you change one function, the effect will be on many. So this complexity increases, that's why these uh procedure oriented languages failed. Okay, then what should we do? We go with the object oriented program, that's why C is procedure oriented, C plus plus object oriented. So that's why they introduced object oriented programs, okay, because rather than depending only on functions, you need to go with, you know, classes. That is where we come, so what is object oriented function? It is nothing but a method, okay, it's a method, method for what? You are structuring the program, okay, so earlier you are using functions and all, that is one way of doing. Now what are you doing? You are using a new method, okay? What for what? Structuring the program, how are you structuring? There you are creating more functions, what are you creating here? Okay, you are creating object, okay, apple, what is this apple? Object, why you are calling this apple? Because it has. Red in color, heart in shape, edible, skin edible, okay? Only winter season, okay, sweet, so every object has what? Properties and behaviors, clear? In interviews and all you can answer. If you answer this way, what is object oriented programming? Method, method of what? Structuring the program, why are you structuring the program? What is object? Should you anticipate? So now you give it, it is a method of structuring the program, in the C procedure oriented program, we are using functions and all. Here what I am doing, my entire program I am structured into objects, okay? And what is object, which has its own properties, every object. As the properties entity, is it a scroll type or touch type? Is the wheel here or IR here? But it is, this is also a mouse, that is also a mouse, wired or wireless. Okay, like that, so every object has a property and behavior, how it functions, behavior. You understand, every property will have, uh, every object will have a property and a behavior. So what is object oriented programming? Method of structuring the program where we create objects which have its own properties, now you are all smart. Okay, then we will go a bit. Who breaks the program into objects? So that means in the object oriented program, why we call it object oriented program? Where we are using classes, we are not using, using class oriented program, no, why? Classes are something, now A B C equal to five, what is A B C? Variable, what is A B C? Identifier, what is A B C? Object, object of what? Object of what? When you print A B C, what it will say? After that, what it will say? Class integer. It will say class integer, when did I say it is integer? The moment you assigned integer, it belonged to the class integer. Until already, you said that this object belonged to the class integer. That means every object you create should have a class, every person should have a parent. Okay, they can't come from the sky, right, like that, objects cannot come from sky, objects are created from the classes. Object here from the classes, the moment you assigned a five, which belongs to an integer class, what it became? Class integer, you remember, I told that I will tell you later. Why class? Because now A B C is an object, now X Y Z is two point five, what is X Y Z? Again, object belonging to class float, now A B C plus X Y Z. What am I doing? In object oriented programming, we don't work with value, objects interact with each other. You understand? So objects are created and objects interact with each other, that is the beauty of this. So every object, when I said A B C is an object, what are the properties? What are the properties of A B, of A B C? It is a numeric one, whole number. So where from it is inheriting those objects, those properties, from the class it is created. You understand? It is innate, uh, what are, what are your things? Your blood group, your DNA, your facial features, where are inheriting from? Your parents, you are the object and parents are the class, you understand? So how do you get this, all this, your surname, everything you are inheriting, the moment you create an object. It belongs to a class and all the properties and behavior of the class you will inherit. Okay, that's why I don't need to specify, every time I create a person, I don't need to specify your object, your, no, no. Okay, I just create an object and that object belongs to a class, so everything will be inherited, you understood? So this is how we do that, if I have a hap- apple, huh, if I have apple, huh? So the moment I say this is apple, what is happening? We already have a class called apple, now I say that I am holding apple, then what you will tell, sir, you eat it, it will be sweet. It will be this, it will be that, it will be this color, this shape, why you are saying that? Because I said that this belongs to the class apple, okay? Again, there is another concept called, but apple can also be green apple, bit sour. Okay, bit sour, uh, green apple, apple is green, not red as you said, yeah, yeah, sir, but it belongs to the class apple. Some attributes you can change, that is the beauty of objects. When I am creating, I created apple, and now what I said, I don't like red color, so I gave green. Uh, I don't like sweet, so I give soreness, so, but it belongs to the class. Once it is created, then only I can change these attributes and all, you understand? Car, if you take a car, car, every car belongs to a class called car. But after buying the car, I can change the color, seats, okay? This thing, that thing, that means, but this is also a car belonging to the class car, but the attributes and all change, these attributes differentiate everyone. These attributes, suppose you both are sisters from the same family, you are coming from the same class, but still you will have some different attributes, you will have. But your class is same, okay, you may like something, you may like something, so that is your innate, that means the objects when you create. They are from the same class, automatic inheritance, and also you can change the object, that is the beauty. Okay, there is a beauty, it's not that two objects are from the same class, then they behave different, same. Okay, no need, you can change objects independently, that means they inherit everything. Along with that, some new attributes you can add to that, that is how every object belongs to the same class. But they have a unique, you know, individual identities and properties, you understood? That is the beauty of object oriented program, which cannot happen with a function, you understand? So that is what we are going to learn, so object is a entity. Object is a entity, and in Python program, everything, anything is an object, and objects interact with each other. What is the object entity? I am holding, okay, I will tell you, explain me red, red color. What is red color? Red color is color, what is color? Somebody explain me what is red color, what is red? What is red? Explain me, anybody can explain? Actually you can't explain, okay, red is a concept, okay, okay, how else to do? You imagine. Think about a car, huh, think about a car, your, your dream car. Uh, you, think about your dream car. Now see, I will guess your car. Me car, I can read mind, your car has four wheels? One Stephanie, one spare, steering, two correct. Brake, seats, engine. Your car. Steering, feet, how can I guess? Sir, the moment you said car, okay, your car, your car only objects. Maybe you are thinking about Ferrari, you are thinking about Mercedes, but everything belongs to the class called car, and the definition of the car is made there. Understand? Car is a concept, car is a concept, and from that concept you created object. From that concept you create object, so when you create an object, all those attributes, default attributes are arrived. Now you change your car, now I can't guess what is your car color. I can't guess what is color, because once you created object, you changed the car color, you changed the car color. Now I can't guess what is your seat colors. I can't, maybe I can't, what are the items you placed on your dashboard, you understand? Those are independent for your object, but when I think about object, if I say the properties of the object, actually I am not talking about properties of object. I am talking the properties of the class, you understand? The class, how it is created, I am talking, you understand? So everything is a concept in the world, that's why I told you, uh, earlier you did not understand at that time, you are very young. Uh, good and bad, good and bad, is it, there is a ordinal or nominal? Much better already? Good and bad, ordinal or nominal? Online? What is ordinal data? Ordinal data, nominal data. So at that time what they say, good and bad are concepts. Who tells me what is good, who tells me what is bad? Okay, killing a person is bad? Uh, okay, killing ant? It's not bad? Bad, huh? Uh, then why are you killing so many while walking and all, you watch while walking? Uh, that means every day you are killing something, so that is a life also, ant is also life, okay, or mosquito, killing a mosquito is bad? Not bad? My gas chamber. Then what Hitler did, Hitler is the same thing to the humans, then why are you calling Hitler bad? But you create a gas chamber and kill the mosquitoes, poison gas and mosquitoes, it's okay. But Hitler did that, oh, not good, so that means, what is this? These are good and bad are concepts, okay, so situation, uh, at that, at that time I told you, killing a person is bad? Yes, sir, I am a soldier, killing enemy is a bad? No, no, sir, good, sir, huh? Is killing bad or enemy, that means you pick people, huh, like that, so good and bad are concepts. So we always, whatever is action, we relate to those things, and bad and good keeps changing. That's why I did not give it hierarchy, I said good and bad are nominal. Okay, whatever good for you, may be bad, if I lose in the stock market, very bad. If I don't lose in the stock market, how can you gain in the stock market? Game, if I lose, then only you will win, because overall entity is same, okay? Overall entity is same, if entity is same, I need to lose then only, so that game is bad for me, that game is good for you. So two sides of a coin, anything happens, two sides of the coin, okay, good, so that's why here everything is a concept, classes are concepts. Okay, integer, what is integer? You anticipated that there will be a, you know, uh, uh, you know, requirement of data called integers, then you created a class integer. Okay, like that, we create classes first, okay, what are the classes? So why do we do it, reusability of the code, like, just like function, that's also reusability, redundancy, modularity, everything will be there. So I told you, car is a concept, so because car is a concept, that's why I could guess your car. From that car, you created your own object, you created your own object. That your object may be big, small, but that is a car, okay? So it provides a blueprint, what is a class? It's a blueprint, it's only blueprint, it's only blueprint, in the world, we are full of uh concepts. Okay, for that matter, you talk about good and bad, you talk about religion, religion also a concept. Okay, you, you have single monotheism or multiple gods, that is what? It's a concept, okay, it's a path, you understand, right? So everything in the world is a concept, okay, country, what is country? What is country, country is a concept, earlier our country used to be big, just big, Burma, Burma and all, because we are under British. This entire thing is India, okay, then we divided countries, now a country became like this, okay, countries expand, design. Okay, so everything is a concept in this, so I was, I was going for a trek, I crossed the line and I entered Chhattisgarh. Okay, I took one step back, I was in Telangana, huh? How it is possible? So you defined that concept called a state, okay? Earlier, uh, ten years down the line, twelve years down the line, there is no, uh, state called Telangana. Okay, so these are all concepts we create, you understand? So that concepts, one problem is ideologies are constant, when we stick to very core, it becomes a problem. Okay, okay, but here, classes are blueprints, suppose I am creating a banking application, I am creating a banking application. Now you tell me, what are classes I need to create first, before I start, what, what classes I need to create? Account number. My banking application, a bank starts just now, we are starting a bank, what all classes will be there? Very good, deposit is a class, that means what deposit means? You receive money, and next, withdrawal, withdrawal means what? Class withdrawal, deposits all will be in one column, withdrawals all will be in one column, so I created two classes, next. Customer, what is the higher level? Customer, who is customer? Is everyone customer? No, he is my customer, what does it mean? He opened the account and deposited some money, so what are the properties of customer? He should have a formal relationship with the bank, and he should have money to deposit. He opened the account, but he said I don't have money, is your customer? No, so whenever a new customer comes, I create, okay, Ravi customer. That means what Ravi is now? A customer, then I recruited her, Lexi employee, that means employee is a. Another class, now what is the difference between these two? Both are coming into the bank, but what is it? Belongs to the class customer, so I will say, good morning, sir, do you want to drink coffee and all? She is also coming, what is she? Employee, class employee, what will I say? Why you are late, huh, coming, sit down, work, see, you understand? The properties, the behaviors and all depends on the class, then another, she is a service provider. Who is service provider? A temporary helping hand who comes and does, so whenever I am giving money, when I am giving his money, money. I am giving money, what it will become then? Withdrawal, so same giving money, when I am giving her money, what it becomes? When I am giving money, it's called payment, you see, action is same, but which object is taking? So she is an object of class called employee, he is object of class called customer. Your object of a class, so that means first we create classes, you create classes, and from the class, I can print thousands of customers. So now he came, one, but if million people comes, it's okay, sir. Okay, I will create objects from the same class. Next, that means I want to change all the things, what is that? Sir, now customer means he should be more than eighteen years old, okay, I will change the class, when all the objects will fall in line. You understand? So I just change one class and all the objects will fall in line, okay? Employee should be more than eighteen, sir, okay, then I change one class and all the objects will be affected, you understanding? You understanding? And how do you create objects? In a instance. That's why we call as, objects are instances of class, okay? A B C equal to five. I created an object called A B C. How? Just like that. That means, the moment this is executed. The moment is executed. And I created an object called A B C, and what is the class now? Integer. You understand? That's why we call, objects are instances of a class. You understand what I mean instance? The moment the code is executed, you created object. So how can you create object? Just like instance, sir. Okay, the moment I executed his name and customer, that's it, he became a customer. Now this customer, I remove it and keep an employee. He became an employee. So instance, so that's why we say, objects are instances of class. But class is a blueprint. What is a customer? Okay, customer means, sir, uh, who has money, who has a need to save the money and he comes and goes, he won't stay with us, okay, like that. This is a customer. He should be more than eighteen years, like that, we have a concept called customer. Can you see customer? No, we can see only objects. You understand? We can see only objects, but he is a reflection of that, okay? Understood or not? Clearly? Okay, then philosophical question. Who created us? Okay. Who created us? God. Then who is our, god is a class. And, did he create in his shape and form? In his own shape and form? Yes. So we are objects of? Class called god. Then, when I'm object of a class called god. Okay? And I worship god, then am I god? I'm not god. Okay, then what do I have? I have all the properties and behaviors of god. Correct, right? Okay, if I have the properties and behaviors of the god. Okay, why you call me human? Okay, and why your behaviors are like that? Will you kill another animal and eat? God will do that? Because god created that animal also, right? That is also object then. That object who created? Again, god, then that is also instance of a? Class god. Then why do you fight among ourselves? If you are all the same instance, sir. So, that means you believe that the class god, there are two, four classes. This class is different, that class is different, that is the problem. But really, we are all created by that, then what is the problem? You think like this, then your mindset will change, you are also class god, but different class, you are, but we are all gods. Then, we should be pious and you can worship me? Correct, right? You can worship me. Okay, you, I can worship you. Then if we do that, then our behavior should be really different. Okay, we can't hurt each other, we can't say bad each other. Okay, so you prefer to be what? God or human? Human. If you're human, you can eat chicken, you can beat each other. So, if at all god is a class and we are instances of god, then we are, god is inside me. That's why I see that, sometimes we say that, if nobody is there, suppose you're in an Arctic, Arctic circle. Where you will find a tree or this thing, that thing, nothing, so you just pray. You understand? So you, they said, we say each other, we need to see good things in each other. That is what is, huh? It's a philosophical one, but next time you remember this, so if you are instances, you are the objects of the class god. If I am the object of class god and already I inherited everything. That's why, sometimes you say, okay, you are like a god to me, you saved me, you are, you, no, no, actually I am a god already. Who are you to say, you are like god, no, I am god. I saved you because god's job is to save. Okay, that's why, that humanity thing, actually that is the inheritance. A child is crossing the road and somebody will jump and save the child and die. What is that? That godly thinking. You understand that godly thing? So that's why, we are all born, if I say god, you will feel like, okay, where is my, uh, and all, so you're all born saints. So children and all, if you see children playing and all, they don't have any, anything. They, they share, they eat from each other, okay, they, they beat each other, whatever. They're very pure, so purity, in the creation there is purity. But impurity is around the creation and that's what you take. You understand? Purity, creation is always pure. Okay, even sometimes you leave a tiger baby and maybe a goat baby, they don't kill each other. Okay, they don't kill each other, they will be living each other, then once they start behaving, the other properties they get, maybe, okay? So behave good, huh? Because we are all gods. Don't tell outside, huh? Tomorrow, you tell your parents, I'm god. Yeah, we are all gods. Actually, we are, we have, we have all the instances, that's why you do sometimes, even after doing, really I did that? Okay, suppose somebody is in problem, you give the money, okay, suddenly you help, and after that, why did I give her money? Will she give back? That's a human kicking. But the action is good, okay? If you have, don't have food, you share food. So that means you are really pious, huh? And this is my personal, you don't need to follow. That's why I don't believe in anything. I am, I need to be pure and all, okay, that's it, okay? Uh, so you don't need to, uh, uh, believe in rituals, you don't need to believe in formalities, procedures and all, these are all. Like, so if you are going for a marriage, why you to dress neat? Why you to dress new dress and all, is there a requirement that come in need dress and all? It's a requirement of the place, okay? But that, there's a, when you're doing some thing, ah, the class, why you need to come on time? Because there is a decorum, there's a decorum and all the things you need to do like this, don't sleep in my class, what happens if I sleep? Okay, like that, focus, look at me, if I look at you or look at there, whatever, so all those, so there is some rules and regulations, so but. We get into the rules and regulations and forget that we are already pious. Okay, all these things we do, it's only to purify and assure that we are already, you know, we already have it. We already have it, we inherited those things. All the things we do, why do we go to temple, masjid, mosque and all, so that the inside purity will come. When you go to that place, can you think wrong, something wrong? You can't, that means already, good and bad is inside you. You are hiding that bad and trying to think good. You understand? So, we are all gods. Okay, tell me who wants one million dollars? Or you try, can you create? Okay, no worries, okay? So this is one, also class and object, beautiful concept. Okay, somebody thought that I don't need to, uh, you know, uh, work on the variables and all, I will create classes. And every object you create will be instance of the class. Okay, so that, that will inherit all the properties and behaviors, this will be exactly like that. So that is invisible. So now I ask you, what is, uh, red color? I don't know, sir. But apple is red. What do you mean by red? This belongs, the color belongs to the class called red, you can't define what is red. Okay, you can't define what is red. So we already have a concept called red and I'm attaching to this. Car. You see, right from the Ford up to now, all the cars have four wheels. If it's having three wheels, will you call it car? You call it auto. That means somebody created, why for, why not five wheels? If Ford created car with five wheels or the early man created a car with five wheels, maybe we, maybe they created a, uh, same, uh, uh, car with chain. What we call, sir, car with chain is not a car, sir, it's a tank. Oh, we have another concept called tank. But if you go to Alaska and all, all the cars will have chains and all. Why? Because they go in the snow. But we have another concept called, okay, track machines or all-terrain machines and all, you understand? So we create concepts. There was nothing called all-terrain vehicle. Uh, ATV. Um, till the paper, so it's a, only three state. All, all-terrain vehicle, that means when you're going the sand dunes or rough areas, okay, that means normal cars won't work there. Then what you need, cars with big tires, uh-huh, car with big tire is what? All-terrain vehicle. You see those guys go, but the handle is not like this. That is like this. Okay, now we create a new class. What is that? It will have four wheels, car, no, no, not car. Okay, steering will be not be like, steering will be like this. Okay, what is another thing? It has motor, it's a motor everywhere is there, no, no, it has big wheels. So that means we create a new class called all-terrain vehicle. And what is property? Can I take all with terrain vehicle on the nor- normal road? You'll say mad guy. But the same all-terrain vehicle, I go into sand dunes and all, you'll say, wow, what a guy, yeah. Okay, see? So like that, we humans are, uh, live in the world of concepts. Okay, because the concept is that all-terrain vehicle you should not ride on the? This thing, okay? That means this is purpose and also, that means the properties and behaviors already set in a class. So if I'm making, if I'm saying that, I'm manufacturing a new car. World's fastest, world has never seen such a car, I'm manufacturing that car. Tell me what are the properties of that car? Now you can guess. You'll say, your car has four wheels. See, whatever new thing I create, I said that this belongs to the class called car. You understood the concept between class and object? So objects, you can create millions of objects. If I designed a car called Ferrari, now everything will be a object of the car, okay, good. So now, the concept is, see, objects have its own functions, variables. So now, A B C equal to five, or A B C equal to string, what all properties inherited A B C? Okay? It inherited functions like length. Okay? Uh, this thing and methods. Methods. Capitalize. Okay, all this, did you give anywhere? A B C capitalized, A B C, uh, length, A B C color, A B C, uh, this thing bold? Then how did it get? Sir, the moment you assigned this thing, this became an object of the class called string and that string already inherited, oh, oh, everything automatic. At the moment you're born in that family, this house is mine, surname is mine, you already took everything. Nobody need to come, your dad should not come and say, now your surname, ah, no, I know, already I know. Okay, you understood? The moment you born in the family, you have inherited everything. You understood? So inheritance. That's why the moment I assigned this file, this already got capitalized, bold, length, functions, methods, everything I got. You understand? For that, I can add new ones, okay? Good. So that is object. So these are types of, see? So it will get, it will have attributes and it will have methods. Okay, but methods and all, attributes you can change, methods and all you can't change, huh? Good. See? Here, what am I doing? Attributes, methods. So you option, this is my dream car. When I said my dream car, again it is from the class called car. So what is that? Okay, methods, what are the methods? This car can start, stop, repeat, turn, all those things. Then what are the attributes? Attributes said, when did I buy the car? What is the horsepower? What is the color? What is the make? That makes this car different. Now I'm talking about this my option car. What is this option car? It is same. Because these are inherited directly from. But attributes I can change. I can change that into black color, horsepower I can reduce, type I can do, everything, you understood? So attributes and methods. So methods, we inherit. So reusable of code, so class is the parent and objects we create, you can print hundred objects. Okay, so class integer, it is there, A B C equal to five, one object created, X Y Z equal to five, one object created. You use any number that to a class by just assigning equal to, that's it, the equal to I give. It becomes a object of that class, because five is an integer class. Just by saying equal to, I create a thing. So how do you create objects? By saying equal to, see? This is the class I created, what is a class created? Customer. Class customer. What he will do? He will bring the money, he's a necessity and all, now I build a class. Now you came. Okay, so I created a class called customer. Now you came. Okay, Ravi equal to hello, that means that's it. The moment I say Ravi equal to customer, I created a object called Ravi, who will inherit everything from the customer. You understand? So this is how, see, I created a class. And the moment I created object by just assigning operator, just by assigning operator. So, now if I say H dot object, it will talk about, H object dot name, it will talk about, enter your name. Age, it'll last in age, okay? One more example I'll show you, see? I created a class called student details, in that, I created some variables, some actions. Okay, these are all attributes. Now I'm creating object, how am I creating a new student? New student. So what am I doing? Just assigning this class, just by assigning. Now what is student one? Is an object of the class student details, guess what all student one will receive? Now if I ask, student one dot marks, how much will be the output? Where did I give student one marks? They give, ever give, give any marks to student one? They give average to student one? But how are you getting these things? Sir, you inherited, sir, the moment you created an object out of the class, you inherited, okay? Now I'll say student two equal to student details, what will happen now? Now we get student two is a new object, what will be the, uh, marks and average? Again, it will inherit, it hits, sir. See how easy it is? So once you create a class called customer, employee, vendor, you inherit. Okay? See? I can create a? Function inside a class, here I should sell. A function inside a class is called as a? Method. You understand, earlier we did, so when I created class string. When I created, Python developers created class string. What did they do? They created function called? Capitalize. They created a function called, what else functions we learned? Appa. They created a function called lower. They created a function called ease appa. So now, so inside the class string, I created function, so I call it as a method. What is a method? Any function created under the class. Okay, now, this class string is created, good. Now I'll say, A B C equal to Python. The moment I gave this, what is this object called as? Class string. Now, A B C dot capitalize, can I say? Yes. Why? You inherited everything, boss. You inherited everything, now capitalize. That means, why I'm calling this method? Because I'm using the function that is inside the class. In that, so suppose you inherited everything, you inherited a house. You inherited a car, you inherited knowledge, you inherited some items. So now I say, U dot car. That means I'm talking about the, whatever you inherited, that method I'm talking about, that's why, these are all functions. So whenever I ask, what is the difference between method and the function? Function is a standalone, which I can call. And method is also a function, but defined under the string. So I can apply only on that object. Only on that object. So this object, when it's inheriting, it inherited everything. And in that, one of the thing is that, that means, A B C is already having that method. Okay, that's why whenever you're saying, A B C this capitalize, it is working. Now I have X Y Z, X Y is equal to five. Yeah, X Y is equal to five. Can I say X Y Z dot capitalize? Why? It belongs to another class called integer. In that class, there is no method called capitalize. As I said, when I created a customer class. Deposit. I created a function called, method called deposit. When I create employee, I did not create a function called deposit, because I know that employees won't deposit money. But here, I create a function, so, customer dot deposit. Employee dot deposit. So the method inside the customer is deposit, withdrawal, but here, employee dot working days, a salary, those are the methods I have. You understand? So while creating the class itself, we create these methods. Is the concept clear? Concept clearly put there, you can create, see? I created a class called dog. In that I'm creating a function, but that function is inside the class, that's why I call it as a method. Now if I say X Y Z equal to dog. This X Y Z what it will, it will get the variable, it will get the method, everything it will get. See, I already did that. So new dog dot bark. That means new dog, new dog dot bark. That mean immediately the output will be oof. Why? Because you increase, use that method. That's why whenever you say X Y Z dot capitalize, whatever it has immediately converting into capital, capitalized. Why? Already the method is there, I'm just invoking that method. Concept clear? Okay, see, this is a class and this is a function inside the class, that's why we call it as a method. Yeah, instance and all construct is a big thing. There is a init one, that means. Any class you create, the first function should be initializing function, init function. You remember I told you variables don't use like that. Private identifiers use it, so this is a private identifier. Any class you are bringing, so I need to. So when I create a object from the class, this object is coming into existence. Okay, object is coming. How it come into existence, that means some things should happen. Okay, something should happen. That means whatever should happen, you keep in a initializing function. Okay, so whenever you're creating a class, there should be a di- a function called init function. Why? Any object you get, the moment I created a customer, huh? Customer class is there. I created a new customer. The moment I created a new customer, what should this customer hold? I created a new customer, what should by default I need to do something, what is that? Huh? I didn't tell what to study. Or customer create change, I know I need first time with the. Yeah, just untangle. Oh, customer create just an. Get it, yeah, yeah. It's object, yeah. Okay, customer create just an, I created new customer. What should I do for a new customer? Whoever comes. Ah, yeah, she'll give me one customer example, Japan. Adi, very good. What should I do first of all? Account number, sir, uh uh big customer, small customer, okay? This, whatever customer, initializing function will be, give account number. Without giving account number, can I call him my customer? You understand that? Okay, so when I'm creating Ada, suppose Ada, okay? Ada okay identity. As soon as I'm creating a new identity for her, first time she applied for Ada. The moment I create Ada for her, what should I create first? Ada number. You understand? Ada number I need to create, that means init function will have what? Creating a new Ada number. So when I say customer, I need to create Ada number and second thing what? He should belong to one branch. He cannot be customer for I C I C A. He is not customer for I C I C A, he is customer for I C I C A branch Madhapur. This customer should have unique number and customer should belong to a branch. So these two things are primary. So guess in the init function, what will it have? Customer number and branch. You understand? After that deposit, withdrawal, he won't deposit, so what? Okay, or you can create here, minimum balance equal to five thousand, huh? He gave, we gave the account number, we gave this, he did not submit five thousand rupees. Do you, do we call him customer? No, that's it. That means that's what default things. You understood? So init function is must, okay? Uh init function, but that function is inside a class, that's why we call it as a. Okay, we apply methods. Customer dot deposit, customer dot withdrawal. Actually it is nothing but a, it's a function. But inside a class, that's why I'm saying customer dot deposit, customer dot withdrawal. Okay, I'm not calling, I'm applying. Why? These things already defined under the class, okay? You leave it. Okay, we'll, I will share you with you, this is instantiation, we already called it. By how am I in in instantiation only by assigning? See, I'm assigning, I can give parameters also, okay? So I will share with you that file, go through it, okay? There are four pillars of any hoops concept, inheritance, polymorphism, abstraction and encapsulation, okay? What is inheritance we talked about? Okay, you taking birth in one family, you inherited everything, okay? Maybe girls know that, you are entitled for fifty fifty. You know that right? Uh, don't let your parents say that, no, 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 only twenty five, no. Okay, I heard Telangana, once the girl is married, they won't give any property. Telangana people, sorry, not Telangana, Rile Sima. Huh, huh, I'm gonna make you. How we don't expect anything, God, God, dad has ten acres, you expect or not? Oh, okay, let him kill, oh, by the batch of the co. Like both the. Uh, but in Rile Sima views at that, once girl is married and all, done. Uh, no, no, no. Consequently, your father need to give fifty percent. Okay, if you say I want, your, your dad, okay, that is all old ritual, okay? So inheritance means what? You are entitled for, 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 uh, for kids, twenty, 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 okay? Nikakka live with the change. Man party just gonna, please go. You prove whatever the didn't delete, okay? Ah, some part you go, okay? So inheritance is you, you are in that object, you be- you belong to that class, that means you inherit everything. You inherit everything, okay? So that is how, okay, I'll tell you my personal example. Um, okay, that changed my life. This example, okay, one statement by friend changed my life, okay? How, okay, you know, like, smile, picture, like. Okay, okay, uh, uh, my dad used to have a old scooter, okay? And I used to go to the, with that scooter to tuition center. Okay, tuition center, one will show off. Okay, you go with the tuition center, you park it outside, sit on it, where the girls who come, you show off. What I was, I was doing all the time and one day, a friend, stupid friend like this came and asked, is this yours? I said yes, then he asked one, yes, and chipper, okay? Uncle question, yeah. That question changed my life, literally changed my life. Is it yours or your dad's? Got it, yeah, big question. Huh, the moment he asked and he left, I said, no, mine. I left, I was thinking, is it mine or my dad's? Until now I was thinking that whatever my dad's is mine. Got it, yeah, he'll do nothing. Okay, bed do nothing, food do nothing, car, bike nothing. He didn't know what to do. Okay, he's asking that it is yours or your dad's? Third question changed my life, really. Okay, then I thought, oh, I should do on my own. Oh, this bike is not mine. Then I thought, this petrol is not mine. Then what is mine? Nothing. Believe me, I, I was very young and after one year, okay, I started teaching tutsions. Now this money is mine. My goal was bike I can't buy, at least petrol should be mine. That's right, I'm using my dad's bike, petrol and food. After that, anything I ask my dad, I, I used to feel bad. Previously I used to say that book hundred rupees, he used to give hundred rupees, fifty rupees, fifty rupees. Okay, at that time, from that time moment onwards, that stupid guy changed my life. He said when he had, oh, that means I should have my own, so now at least petrol should be mine. I used to have girlfriend and all, going around, huh? Now petrol should be mine, if not, everything she is eating, my dad's money. Try, one tuition, money is not enough, two tutsions. So with that what happened? I stopped playing and all, going after stupid people and all, okay? Serious education and evening, go houses, teach their children, rich people, they give money, okay? With that money, then go out, bike, eating. I used to feel, feel good that I'm eating my own earning. My daddy should give me, uh, when I started doing that, my dad happily give me that bike and all. Because I am earning, I'm doing, I should negotiate with him, I'll pay only hundred rupees petrol. Happily, that after that I understood because he was thinking that ah he's earning. And I stopped playing cricket and all on the roads and all, we used to play cricket because I got serious. So sometimes inheritance, whenever I talk about inheritance, it comes. So you don't take inheritance for granted. Why I'm telling? You're almost exiting, okay? After this no second chance, so this is the final chance, your money or your parents' money. It will decide it, my, from then onwards, touch wood, I never took money from them. Even after his retirement, I said, no, I don't want. Okay, she's talking like this, maybe she's crazy like me or she's just saying it, okay? So that is very, very good thought, it is not our money, yeah? It is his money, he can spend, he can do whatever he wants. Your money means you need to earn, good? Very good, I'll see you after five years and then tell whether you took money or. Ah, don't say that when he's giving money, pocket money, take it. It is your right, birthright, okay? He's giving you some watch and all gift and nothing, take it. Because he's giving you as a gift, you give friend, right? You offer brilliant, it's like that, okay? But don't demand and no inheritance. Okay, that's why US and all, why people are very, they find success everywhere? Because they say that it's my money, it's my dad's money. From thirteen years, fourteen years, they do that. Okay, they're, they earn and all, they will be independent. We, okay, most of you can't achieve jobs because you always have the fallback. That if I go back home, my dad will take care of me, okay? Or marry someone like that. No, if you don't have any fallback, you don't have any village to go back. Okay, you don't have anyone to invite you back. Or the person who is inviting you has nothing, then what you'll do? You will get a job immediately, believe me, that, that thought itself will give you jobs, okay? So be serious, inheritance, don't believe, only objects inherit, okay? There are objects inherit, you don't inherit, good? Good, and polymer, ah, but end of the day, one more thing I'll tell subtly. If your dad passes, I mean, or the parents and pass away, you are getting some money, don't donate, keep it. That you said, because rather than throwing away, you keep it to yourself, that means after them. Okay, after them you can expect, that is okay, that is natural, huh? By nature you can expect, but with that don't plan, huh? With that don't plan anyway. So that is idiot, that means from parent to child. Literally this is, the relationship is called parent-child relationship, okay? I can create two classes, I can create two classes and create one object. This is actually us. One to one is one parent, one class. Here, class one, class two. This object will get all the inheritance from class one, all inheritance from class two, like us. I get my features and all from my parent, maybe one parent and blood group from another parent, that is what we, our DNA and all, okay? It's like, see, I'm getting two classes, from two classes I can create one, okay? This is parent-child, always there will be parent-child, so then it will go on, good? So inheritance is parent-child relationship. Okay, good, so when I say parent-child, you can assume that this will get all the properties and behaviors? It will get all the, now this object has both classes properties and this, okay? Good, and polymorphism, polymorphism, poly means many, morphism means shapes. It is many shapes, multiple forms. If you say and, okay, uh, if you say and or plus, when you're using, what will be the output? What will be the output? See, here it is used as concatenation, here it is using as. You understand polymorphism, same, okay? Using for and method override, everything is. So second property is polymorphism, many shapes and all, and abstraction. Before abstraction, we'll go with encapsulation. What is encapsulation? Whenever you talk about uh object and all, what it is, object is encapsulating, properties, behaviors, methods, everything is encapsulated, okay? So that is why if you talk about a car, object car, it has color, shape, uh, uh, ear, this thing and all. So it hides the data inside object. And I can give you access to member access only, I can create safety and all. Abstraction is when hundred details are there, okay? You can, it's extension of encapsulating, you encapsulate unwanted and only high detail access. That means if I buy a car, okay? I, I'll ask me, what is the power of the car? Then I say uh hundred HP horsepower or two hundred horsepower. What do you mean with two hundred horsepower? Two hundred horsepower is high level detail. How this two hundred horsepower came? Because of the engine, what type of engine, whatever pistons, how many pistons, how many this, how many that, multi-point fuel injection? All these bullet, all these points together, you make it as a one high level. Rather than discussing about hundred features, you are taking one, this is abstract. You read a poem and all, you say what is the abstract of that? Until Saran Suminti, okay? That is all, so abstract is high detail access. So protects data from exposure, now what is one two hundred HP horsepower? That means what is the engine, what is the fuel, all those details I'm hiding and I'm giving you only that, okay? And you can mo- modify it all, you understood? These are the four things, but you can go deeper and work inheritance, polymorphism, interviews and all. Okay, if you say this, it's okay. Inheritance, polymorphism, abstraction, encapsulation. What is encapsulation? Is the, is the selected exposure of object. Everything is encapsulated, hides the data, functions, methods inside it, only member access will be there, so this is. So even if you destroy one object, another object is there. So I created two objects from the same class, I created two objects. Now I destroy this object, what happens to this object? It stays, okay? I changed this object, what happens to this object? It stays, okay? I give you access to this object, what happens to this object? No access. See, both belong to the same class, same inheritance, everything is same, but act independently. Okay, two sisters from the same family, twin sisters, but still they both are different entities. Different, she got gold medal. No, okay? But she'll get the same food, same surname and all these things, okay? This is independent, this is independent, you got it? Good. Solid, inheritance we can talk, see, parent-child, everything is parent-child, we talked about. And a parent class, derived class, you can create a derived class or the child class, okay? Or you can create a new class, so once I created, um. Okay. Employee, shareholder. What is employee? Who takes money and works, shareholder who invests money and waits. Now I can create a employee shareholder. What is employer? He is working with the company for shares, sweat share. So that means this new class belongs to what? Employee and shareholder, this guy has both the properties. You understand, he takes the salary, minimum salary, but he gets shares because of the sweat. How he's working and all, you understand, right? That means two classes I use and I create a new class called sweat share. Our working partner, uh, working partner. We can create something like working partner. What is working partner? This guy works and also takes shares, that guy is only investor, okay? That means investor and employee, both together, that is called working partner, you understand? So two classes are combined and create new class instantly. So once you create the primary classes, okay? Color, what is color? What is color? What is color? You can't define what is color, color, you can't define color. At the same time, what is red? Color is sir, what is peripheral or external? Uh, external, that gives identity, uh, what do you mean by that? You use more words, but you can't define what is color, okay? Red. No, now you're creating a new class called red color. So what is red? No, now you're creating a new class called red color, so what is red, it's a wavelength, okay, what is wavelength? Uh, okay, so red and color you gave, you got a new class called red color, okay? Sometimes we create, uh, okay, now I got red color, correct? Uh, you got blue color, huh, two classes, now, not, uh, pink, yellow, what's that? Red and white, red and yellow. You know that all these colors are a combination of different colors, the primary colors are white and black? Actually, no, what are the primary colors? Huh, what are the primary colors? Yellow. Rainbow colors. What are the primary colors? Very good. RGB, that means if I have RGB, I can create any color. So that means only three colors you need, now you mix this with this, with this, with that, it becomes different colors. So that means all the colors are coming from these classes. You understand, good, so like that you can create a child class. And it will go on very deeper, but for you data analyst and all, you don't need that much, no data scientist. You'd understand the concepts, you can create small classes, huh, you can, functions you created, now you create a class. Earlier I told you that everything, e- even odd, uh, this thing, that thing, everything you convert into functions. What is that OTP generated function, now you take all those functions, create a class. Okay, so you create a class, then that class, when you give it to a object, this object will inherit all those functions. As methods.